Here. And we're going to skip item number three, which is privilege of the floor until after our presentation tonight, just in case there's anyone who wants to be heard regarding the presentation that we're having tonight. So we'll go right to item number four, which is a presentation by our Facilities Committee regarding municipal facilities. So quite a while ago, the Board agreed that it was time to address the needs that we have here in the village for fire, police, and village offices. And we thought the best way to do that would be to put together a board of citizens who live in the village and pay taxes in the village to get educated and make some recommendations to us. So they went through a process that got them as educated as possible in how we do things, what we do, and what the shortcomings of our facilities are. And they finished their task. And I have to tell you that as a teacher for 32 years and in politics for 16 years, I've been on a lot of different committees, and this was probably one of the most dynamic, serious, professional committees I've ever had the pleasure of serving on. So I personally want to thank the members of the committee, and I'm looking forward to the Board hearing what you guys came up with and how you came up with it tonight. So with that, each of our members had something very unique to contribute. And I just want to go through the fact that when we started this process, we had 21 applicants to be on this committee. The entire Board interviewed each of the applicants, and we came out with what is, as I said, a very, very strong committee. And if you would, when I call your name, just raise your hands so the Board can remember who you were, even though they did interview you. Hulien Brickalt is not here this evening. Tim Goyet is our presenter for tonight. Paul Shade. Josh Walter. Dave Busafaro. Tom Galan. And Josh Bupur is not here tonight as well. He's off receiving an award for something else. So once again, thank you guys. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Tim, and he's going to bring you through the process that this committee went through.
Hi, everybody. Well, the Mayor kind of ruined my first two slides, going through the whole objective of what our group was. Like you said, it's to review the options and make recommendations to the Board for the facilities in Scotia, to review the fire department, the police department, and village hall, as well as the court, which didn't make a great... It didn't get in here as well as I wanted it to, but we'll get into that a little bit more as we go in. But we wanted to touch on what the process was, what we went through as a group. First thing is, we learned the history of previous attempts of improving these facilities. We took a tour of the facilities and barely made it through. So we listened to presentations from all of the department heads. We compiled the wants and needs of each department. We toured other facilities, went to Buchanan Fire Department and to Niskun Town Hall to see what their new renovations were and what they had in the process and what they went through. We also discussed all options that were available, and then we developed the recommendation, and we're presenting it to the Board today. So that's the end of the process that we went through. So as far as the history is concerned, there's some images here of what has been presented previously. And we learned with 3D diagrams, pictures, different proposals that came through, what was proposed to the Board previously, or things that didn't even make it to the Board, and then also why they failed. So we were trying to cut all those mistakes out to make sure that we had the best proposal available. Like I said, during our tour, we got a complete tour of all the spaces, from starting in the clerk's office, and then went all the way through, village hall, the fire department, and the police department. We gained a better understanding of what each department needed before even hearing from every department head, because there are some blatant things that you can just see by walking through that need to be addressed. And then also gauged those deficiencies, as far as major priorities, right off the bat by taking a look at what deficiencies needed to be upgraded immediately. So these are just some images from people that haven't been through some of the areas in village halls, the clerk's office. You can see it's kind of jammed in there, not a lot of storage space. And then right across the hall is the police department, and this is where the police officers are doing their job every day. You can see they're very cramped spaces as well, not a lot of room to bring any type of people through, or any suspects or anything. They're all on top of each other with the desk and everything. And lastly, the firehouse, which you can see trying to make sure the fire trucks alone isn't the easiest thing to do with a current firehouse. So those are just some images of the current facilities. So then we met with all of the department heads. We met with the clerk's office, code enforcement, building inspector, village court, police department, and fire department. They gave us a rundown of all their duties, their minimum needs that they would need to make sure that they're able to keep running, and then their future wants, and the justification for those ones. Because as a group, we can't just take what they want and try to make it their dream position. We need to actually know why they need those things. So we took all of that into consideration. Every head gave us a few pages of information for every want and justification. There's a lot of work that went into just that, to present it to us. So then we went and toured some other facilities. Like I said, we went to Buchanan Firehouse, that's been newly renovated. And then we also went to Niskun Town Hall, that was renovated a little while ago. I say, maybe I'll speak for the group here, but overwhelming to see the difference between what we toured here versus what the new facilities, the upgrade, the size difference. I think one of the things that we realized right off the bat is the size that Scotia needs may not be the size that these places have. We realize that some of these areas are... There's a lot of unused space that we wouldn't need here in the village. And also, one of the biggest things we took away from that is, we want to build it to last. So we're going to make sure that when it goes through, if we're doing any renovations or we're doing any new buildings, that you need to build it to last, because you don't want to have to do this again in 15, 20 years. And then also, what layouts were publicly friendly. If you were... Some of the areas we went into, it's easy to get lost as you went through the town hall of the fire department. So just some of those things that we noticed in light. So we went through and compiled all of the options that were available for the village. First one, we came up with is do nothing, which kind of defied the purpose of the entire group, but we put it on there. There was to build a single building that include everything like we have now, to have all of town hall, court, clerks, fire department, and police all in one building again. To build separate fire, police, and administration locations. A joint municipal building with Glenville. There was a meeting where the proposal came up about that, and we'll touch a little bit later on what the pros and cons to that are. And then also renovating the current building and building a freestanding firehouse. So those are all the options that the group came up with. Do nothing was quickly removed. I think it was on the list for a minute or two, but we quickly took that right off. So then we went and looked at a single municipal center. We came with a pros and cons list for everything. The pros list is it's preferred by all departments to be close. They all work very close to each other, and a lot of their jobs are intertwined. So it was a preferred method for them, so that everyone was close to be able to... It's easier for... This is one of my next ones, or maybe not. It was easier for the public to do one task in the same building if they had to do it one step at a time, like going to clerk's office and the fire department, or vice versa. It's potential for cost saving. It's convenient, and it also increases the services that are provided by Scotia. The cons list is, in order to do that effort to a brand-new building, it removes the most amount of taxable property in the village. The location size becomes difficult if we want to keep it centralized on Mohawk Ave. The overhead and maintenance after construction is also very high, and then it would also involve selling the current village hall. So a separate fire department, police, and administration location. It's brand-new facilities. That's a huge pro. You can kind of build it to what you want it to be. It's easier to find locations, because they all don't need to be... It doesn't need to be the largest of all of property that's in Scotia. You can find three smaller locations and build everything that you need. And it also increases services, because they're independent, and they're able to get... The fire can... If they're close, they can get to different locations faster. They're not getting in each other's way, if that was a con to a previous one. The cons list is it's separate personnel. Again, it's an overhead and maintenance for three facilities now, not just one. You would have to, again, sell current village hall. It's more property being removed from the tax role, and then it's a public inconvenience. Like I said, they all work very closely together, and for the public to come in and have to go from one building on Mohawk Ave and then have to mile down to be able to finish the transaction is a huge inconvenience. So we also had a meeting with Glenville, because they are apparently also looking to move their town hall. And the supervisor came in and gave us a proposal of doing a shared municipal building. The pros to that is village hall goes back on tax role, so this would be another... It's kind of a con for the last two, so we were trying to find a pro for this one, is that they would put on tax role. You have potential for a shared space with the community. They had a big proposal that was one of their main pushing points, is that there would be shared space that Glenville and Scotia could use. And also, the property that they were currently looking at sharing with us was going to be donated by a builder. That also became one of the biggest issues for us as well, because that property is not currently in Scotia. So that is one of the cons that's on our list, is that there would have to be some sort of moving of Scotia line to make sure that it was... Because village hall has to be within the border of the village. So the one big thing that we came up with that we still would need a firehouse, this doesn't include that. Like I said, it's outside the village. There's a potential for reduced services, because we're moving it from the center of the village out. This property is out on Dutch Meadow, so it moves it outside further away, so you're increasing the times that services can be provided to the village. There's no timeframe or formal proposal right now, because after that, it would also slow the process down. It's also a matter of resident access. One of the things that every department head told us is that people walk in right off the street, they need help right here, because they're in the village, it's an easy walk from most people's houses. If you put it out on Dutch Meadow, you're not going to have that traffic. You're going to be more inconvenient for those that are looking for that easy access. It's a huge change in the operations and reorganization of what needs to be done, because now you're sharing space, you're out further out, there's different procedures, because now there's more time to, as response times, and it changes the entire operational systems of every department that's in the building currently. And it also becomes a scheduling issue if we're sharing a courtroom, if we're sharing a community space, who has it what and what day, and that was just an issue that we all had with this proposal. So and then the last one is that we had is renovate the current building and build a freestanding firehouse. The one thing that we all kept coming back to on this one is renovating this current building, is it keeps the historical character of Scotia. This building is huge. It's an icon of what Scotia is, seeing the main gate and everything, so we want to make sure that we kept that. We all like the fact that we would keep that a historical character. It's the least amount of taxable property being removed from tax role. It keeps a central location where we currently are. It expands the space for police, court, and admin. The cost-saving in renovation versus new, renovating this building would obviously be less expensive. Hopefully, it would be less expensive than building a brand-new building, but that's what most of the research that we had was, that renovation would be less expensive. It would be a two-stage process of building a firehouse and then renovating. It's more community space, likely the lowest-cost solution overall, and it's the least disruptive to the village employees. Cons list that we had, it's unconless, is the unknown renovation of the village hall currently, and also would be the temporary relocation of the police and admin court while construction was taking place. I don't know if it's obvious by our pros and cons list, which our option was, but we went with renovating the current building and building a freestanding firehouse. That was our proposal that we came up with, and that's what we're presenting to the Board.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. At this point, I'm going to ask if any Board members have questions for members of the committee. It's a sign of a good presentation. So at this point, I once again want to thank the committee, and I would like to move that the Board to accept our Facilities Committee's recommendation. One second. Any discussion? What happens while we're on that?
Jesse.
Yes.
Jesse. Yes. Yes.
And I'd also like to make a motion to follow up, along with the Mayor's motion, to authorize the Mayor to prepare an RFP for a scoping study to continue along with the village project here.
And I'm going to second that. Any special to that? Please call it on that one.
Jesse.
Yes.
Jesse.
Yes.
Yes. Yes. So I'll tell you that at the end, Twilight of my career here, I am pretty happy with a lot of the things that were accomplished during my time as Mayor. And my biggest disappointment was that I was unable to address the facilities in the village here, the fire department, police, and village hall. As a person that worked his entire career in a building and room that was built the year I was born, I know what it's like to spend your career as professional in a substandard atmosphere. And I really think that this committee and this Board have gotten us on a track to address that issue, so I'm proud to be a part of it, at least at the end of my career. So thank you guys very much again.
Thank you.
We never thought you were a substandard, Chris.
Depends who you thought. So with that, we're going to take a five-minute recess. Anyone who was here solely for this is welcome to wind their way out. Anyone who wants to stay for the remainder of our meeting is welcome to stay as well. Before I do that recess, though, I'm going to open privilege of the floor, in case there's anyone in the audience that wants to make a comment. Is there anyone here who would care to be heard at privilege of the floor?
Any ideas where the new fireplace might... Our fire department might be?
No, but if you would, just stand and state your name and address for the record.
My name's Tom Ringy. I live at 117 North Toll.
Yep. So...
And I was just curious if there was any idea where the new fire department might be.
Speaking for the committee, the preference would be to get it as central to the downtown as possible. When the scoping study that we just authorized, this committee came up with what the direction should be, what the scoping study would be would be professionals who you pay to do the sizing, location, and cost analysis of what the project would be. So what they'll do is they'll go and they'll just survey the village and say, okay, a building can go here, there, where, and then there will be several different options of where that building should go. And again, to answer your question, because it's a good one, that scoping study takes about six months. Okay. Anyone else in here that you're... All right. With that, I'll close privilege of the floor, and we'll take a five-minute recess to take the screens down. County Solar Consortium Member, Andrew of Understanding with General Electric International. And we have Chris Gardner here, representative from GE. We have been sent the proposal. Basically, the county is looking at doing a solar initiative to make the entire county independent, and solar... Solar... I don't know what the word I'm looking for, but...
Solar power.
Hundred percent solar, I'll put it that way, without my correct word. So it requires an agreement from each of the participating municipalities. That agreement is a 20-year agreement, and the trustees had some questions on it. So I don't know if the trustees want to... If you guys want to come right up front, you can talk to the trustees, maybe introduce yourselves as to who you are, and we'll go on any questions.
My contract guy's in the bathroom, so hopefully he's there. My name's Al Gore. I work for GE. I work in our business development group, like being working with the county, Chris and team, probably the better part of the year on this initiative.
Can I stop you for one minute?
Yeah.
Now the screen's down. Would you mind going to the podium, because if you talk into the microphone, it gets onto the video.
Okay. You want me to use the mic as well?
No singing.
There's a song and dance after, or after you agree to. So my name's Al Gore. I work for GE. I work in sales and business development. I've been with the county, and Chris, which is a partner of mine, the better part of the past year on developing the program for the county in terms of building solar out for you guys, and happy to answer questions tonight. We can do introductions, Chris.
Okay. Sorry.
Happy to have him answer a question.
That's right. We stepped in real time. So I'm Andrew Kreskovich. I work on the project financing and contracting for a lot of our solar projects in New York and other states, in Oregon, and then with the mall, and developing the projects for consortium, as well as, obviously, Chris and others in the county. So pleasure to be here and answering any questions you have about the program, about contracts.
I'll shoot out the first one that called you, Kathy. So in the agreement, you know, it's requiring, I think, a 20- or 25-year commitment, but the page on the projected savings did not have a lot of detail on it. Can you tell me how... What considerations go into that, and what you're looking at as far as projected savings and that sort of thing, and how that long-term commitment works out?
Sure. So it is 25-year terms. You're right about that. That's very typical for these solar projects, 20, 25-year terms. We're putting in the capital for the system. I know it's going to the town, and we're expecting to save U-energy as compared to current utility bills. So that long-term enables us to get a return on the capital and the equipment that we've deployed, you know, in the county here. In terms of the savings, it's impacted by a number of things. First and foremost, being utility feedbacks. We're going through an extensive study process with National Grid. They will come back at the end of this Caesar Study process with projected upgrades for their own infrastructure they will need to pay for. And that's something could be quite extensive, and we don't have visibility into that until we reach the end of that process. Because we may have those additional costs, we can't fully estimate what the savings will be. But I understand where the question is coming from. At this point, we're not asking for signature prior to knowing those savings numbers. We're just providing a contract for review, for comment, and then once we know those final figures, we can provide them and get the contracts executed.
Okay. And so can you give me an idea? I know that... So I looked into it for the village, and the incentives are kind of dwindling for municipalities especially. Does this consortium have any effect on the incentives that have been out there, or is it still kind of the same situation as if the village had gone on its own?
So the Nishra Megwad Block incentive, is that what you're referring to? That Megwad Block 12 is still open. There's still room there for us to allocate the incentives, and then we essentially pass that benefit through to the town in the form of energy savings. That just helps to reduce our overall capital.
If I could maybe just span it up. General Electric was chosen as a result of a competitive request for proposals, and I believe we had 12 different companies submit proposals. We made it down to a final five, and our conclusion was that General Electric offered the best savings package because of their unique approach on this, integrating community solar into the program. And maybe you guys could explain how that works. And not only potential for savings of, say, 20% to 40% for governments, but also potential savings for businesses and for individual homeowners throughout Schenectady County.
So... So on the back of Chris's point to your question, the value in doing it through the consortium rather than doing it on your own does add value for you guys. We're able to basically use land throughout the county. We're not actually using land in Scotia. Because we're able to use multiple parcels, we're able to build at basically... We're able to leverage economies of scale, because we're building multiple sites for not only you, but for Glenville, Dwaysburg, Delancey, and the county and the city alike. And so there's value in that, because we're able to offer you guys more favorable rates than just doing a one-off project. In terms of community solar, the way you want to think about it, the way that we position it, is community solar is simply that, right? We build a system, and all of the electrons that are produced by that system are supposed to be shared amongst multiple people. In this instance, the way we've designed it is that that sharing is all through the cities, towns, and the county. So it's really staying pretty close to Schenectady County. It's more valuable to do community solar as well, so the value that you retain in terms of the solar bill credit, which is what we're referring to, it's more valuable than a one-off project. So Scotia was building its own solar system in its own backyard, and they weren't going to leverage community solar, and they weren't going to leverage the economies of scale of using other joint parcels. The economic system wouldn't be as attractive as we think we could offer once we go for our engineering.
And the economics of any given solar project are... They're locked in as far as the framework, the legal framework, the consortium contracts. The one big variable is the interconnection cost. And so we're looking at those individually, and those will... In some cases, we have some sites in Dwaysburg which are getting knocked out, because the interconnections costs are too high to make it economically feasible. But with what we perceive to be the projected interconnection cost for a lot of these sites, it'll be significant savings for the towns, and the county, and the city, and also all our residents. So the exact number could flow... The highest would be 50%. On the low end, you know, we're talking 15% to 20% for the municipals, and we believe that's the best deal that's out there right now.
I have one more question. I'll turn it over to other trustees that might want to talk to, but... So I'm a little bit confused. So when I read the agreement, and when I talked to the county manager, I was under the impression that we were asking to become partners without that page of projected savings. So what I think I just heard is that right now, you're looking for some kind of an idea of whether we'd be interested, and then the contract itself would be when those projections were complete and we had solid numbers. Is that true?
There's two things. One is the consortium agreement itself creates the legal framework, which has the rates that we're getting from General Electric. And then there's some reductions in our savings based upon the interconnection cost. So we're asking you to join the consortium, and then I guess that's all we needed to do right now. As far as whether you want to buy the solar power down the line, you know, there'll be a precise number that comes out depending upon the interconnection cost.
Okay.
But you have the framework within the agreement that's binding.
So anybody, any Board members have any questions?
So basically, to enter the consortium, is that's where we're going to buy our power from? We're going to... If we enter a consortium, we have to buy our power from GE at their rate that we don't know yet for the next 25 years. That's what I got from that.
No, no. You join the consortium to create the legal framework, and then you can say yes or no as far as ultimately what your participation...
We decide it's binding if we join the consortium. What does that mean? I mean, for...
It's binding that that's... Those are the rates. That's the formula. The big variable in the formula is the interconnection cost, and that's... Could offset the savings, potential savings on the high end of 50%, reduce them. So...
Does it mean the only place in the village we can put a solar panel is probably on our DPW building? There's literally nowhere else in the village, so there's not really much savings for us on that, other than locking us into this contract, which we don't know the rates on. That's what we're worried about. There's rates, there's percentages of the cost, and then there's already percentages that are... It's automatically going to go up each year, but we just don't know what that initial cost is going to be. So it's like 1% every year minimum increase. So we already know in 25 years, we're going to gain 25% more. So we're worried about that cost of mine now.
Right. But if you look at the inflation rate 25 years ago and where we are now, it's a lot more than 25%. It's a lot more than 1% per year on electric power, so that tends to go up 2% to 3% or more per year. So long-term, you're also protected on that end by a minimal type increase. And I said, this was a competitive process, and General Electric by far had the best And as I said, this was a competitive process, and General Electric by far had the best proposal out there. As I said, the one big variable is the interconnection cost, but Schenectady County right now, right now we have Monolith providing solar, and we've been saving about 25 to 30%. And we believe this is a better deal than Monolith was offering under the current incentive structures, and they were offering a flat 15%. So we believe we'll do better than that.
So is there any protection, like if National Grid's rates are needs are guaranteed to be under a percentage below that, and you can't go anymore? Like we just did a LED lighting agreement where we'll never pay more than our current bill during the term of that, is there something like that for the solar where you're protected against?
Well, you know, like there's a LED lighting, you're probably best off if you just go ahead and just put in the LED lights yourself and take all the savings forever. So LED lights, you'll save like 70%. So as I said, we had a, and we also had the Intergovernmental Cooperation Committee studying this, and that was the conclusion of the Intergovernmental Cooperation Committee, that this was the best, best deal that was out there, best deal that's available. So you will save money, the exact amount, we can't say now until we know the interconnection cost, but we need to, you know, we're going to be building them, starting in the spring, and, you know, if, like you to cooperate and be part of it, if you choose to.
So Chris, what's the village's role?
You would be a power buyer. You would get an offset from your electric bill, maybe you could explain how that works.
Maybe just to hit on a couple of the things that you had brought up. So you're not competing to buying power, so we're actually not going to be selling you power per se. The power that we produce, and it's just the mechanism of how National Grid works or what National Grid works, is it's going to produce electron, that electron is, in essence, going to create a bill credit. So what you're actually going to buy from us is credits, you're not buying power. So you're still going to buy your power from National Grid, you can have a third-party supply contract if you want, just make sure it's on your National Grid bill, but what you're going to be buying from us is credits. Each of those kilowatt hours that we produces will generate some value. So we'll sell you that value at a discount, right? So think about it as like a Groupon. And you're going to buy those Groupon discounts for 25 years. So it's always going to be a saving, it'll be applied to your bill, to several of your, all of your utility bills, I think you guys, $150,000 a year of energy. And so those bill credits will be applied to those respective bills that we use for the contract. I think the next thing you made was on what their, what their role is?
Yeah.
Yeah, so the role is really that. The role for you is not to, we're up at solar in Scotia, we already know that. What we're going to do is we're going to put solar in Glenville, we're going to put in Dwains, not Dwainsburg, we're going to put in Rotterdam, the city, the county. So we're going to build solar systems throughout the county, and then we're going to allocate that power accordingly. So even though there isn't going to be any solar in Scotia, your role primarily will be to be one of the authors, one of the buyers of those credits.
Those like Rotterdam or Glenville will get a better rate because the panels over there?
No, well, no, I mean, like, that's sort of the letter of law of that MOU, we gave you guys a price sheet, and that's the framework of how it's structured. And so obviously, those are some of the discussions that folks have had, but we want at least to say, look, here's the framework, and the mind in the sand on how the rate starts. We don't know what we don't know, so I don't know what the utility upgrade costs are going to be. Once we know that, we'll then know with each system that we build, every system is going to have a different price. And so respectively, we'll probably mostly try to put you in Glenville system, just from a proximity standpoint, and then we'll go from there. In terms of the other question that you asked, in terms of, is there, I think your question is sort of hinting towards, is there a way to sort of cap or buy like a collar or upper nap? So you can do just what you want in terms of structure. It's not what we proposed, what we originally set out to do this. We proposed a fixed rate for that credit with obviously the 1% escalator. And a 1% escalator, look, I'm not a prognosticator, I can't predict what energy rates are going to be in five years, 10 years, 25 years, I don't think any of us can. But if you look at historicals, 1% is pretty low, from a compounded annual growth.
And that connection cost, is that a cost that the county's going to take on, or is that a cost that we're, what you say, you don't know what the costs are going to be yet?
Yeah, we don't know what the costs are going to be. Inevitably, those costs get rolled into the project. So GE's going to own the project and handle all of the capital costs. Obviously, as a flip component to what we make is, we make part of that fee that's charged, so it'll get effective accordingly. If that's a low number, then you have a low, it's a high number then.
Sure.
Any other questions? So my last question is timeframe. So I know that you guys were looking for some kind of a commitment sooner rather than later. Typically, when we get a topic like this, we ask our questions and gather information, and then we meet at a work session and informally discuss among us what each of us thinks so that we can come out with a consensus, you know, rather than go to a cold boat, that would happen tonight. So what are you looking for as far as the timeframe and answer from us?
Sure, so I'll give you sort of big picture and then sort of short term. So we're going to be ready, we're going to start to get the feedback from utility in the middle of December. For the middle of December, the middle of January, we're now going to start to know what sites we're going to build and what those interconnection costs could be. So we'll know what the final prices are per se. At that point, we're going to start putting the respective towns into certain systems. So it'd be good to know, at least before middle of December, that you guys are at least in agreeance with the framework. Because come mid-December, mid-January, once we know what the prices are, then we're going to come to you and say, now we know what your business case is, can you sign the long-term contract? So that'll be, call it, probably January timeframe. With the contract, the long-term commitment, the MOU would hopefully be in, right, in December.
Perfect. All right. Any other questions? Thank you very much for coming tonight, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
[inaudible]
Item number six is a resolution regarding the transfer of county-owned properties to the village of Scotia. So we had talked about taking ownership of these properties, but then there was that little snafu where the county had never taken ownership, and if we were to take ownership, we would owe the back taxes on it. Leah has worked that out with the county. It's a matter of timing. So we would take ownership of these properties as we discussed, after the first of the year, correct?
Right. For approving it tonight, it wouldn't get filed until first of the year.
And that concludes us from having to pay the taxes on it, except for a little weird thing where we would pay the taxes to ourselves, but, you know, it doesn't affect our taxes. So would anybody care to move that we take these county-owned properties?
I would.
Oh, sir. Any discussion on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And now we're going to go to this bonding project that we talked about. So since we have the audience, I just, I'm going to very, kind of loosely talk about what we're doing here. So the village has bonding debt, we bond for 20 to 30 years on pieces of large equipment or whatever, and then pay it off over that course of those years. So only certain things apply for bonding, plow trucks, things like that, that you know are going to last for the period of time that you have debt on those. To try to keep your taxes under control, but also keep your equipment up to where it needs to be, we felt it's a wise practice to, as your debt falls off, to rebond for new equipment at the same level. So it has no effect on your taxes, but you're replacing worn-out equipment that's worn out, and that way you don't get backed up and all of a sudden have to raise taxes amazingly because you've got a bunch of plow trucks that don't work or whatever. So as I go through these resolutions, it's going to be the pieces of equipment that will be bonding with new debt to replace the old debt that's fallen off this year. So item number seven is a resolution to authorize the sale of a statutory installment bond for the 150 horsepower front end mower.
I'll make the motion.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item number eight is a resolution for the sale of a statutory installment bond for the purchase of a four-by-four one-ton dump truck and salt spare.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item number nine is to authorize issuance of a statutory installment bond for the purchase of an 80 horsepower trailer-mounted leaf mower.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second that. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item number 10 is a resolution for the sale of a statutory installment bond for the purchase of a BenTrak with mower and edger.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second. Any discussion on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item number 11 is a resolution authorizing the issuance and sale of a statutory bond for a Toro workman.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second. Any discussion on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item number 10 is a resolution for the sale of a statutory installment bond for the purchase of a BenTrak with mower and edger.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second. Any discussion on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item number 11 is a resolution authorizing the issuance and sale of a statutory bond for a Toro workman.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second. Any discussion on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And item number 12 is the resolution to authorize the budget transfers and benefits for the bond payments.
I'll make the motion.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Skip.
Whoa.
Skip.
Whoa.
Right.
It's only, oh, I don't have the revised.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry. There was a revision to the agenda, and I didn't, I pinned out one. So item number 12 is a resolution to authorize the issuance of sale of a statutory bond for the F250 four-by-four pickup with plow.
I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
We got it.
Aye, any opposed? Okay. And since we do have a crowd here, we've been talking about this bonding project, I would say for four or five months. So I wish it was always this easy to get everything passed by my board, but this is something that we've been doing for a long time. Okay. Item number 13 is a resolution to authorize me to sign the contract with Empire Engineering P LLC for a handicap accessible sidewalk ramps and about $7,000. So the village has some CDVG money, community development block grant money, that the state, after an audit, has decided that they want back. So our way of keeping the money is to spend it on handicap access. And our decision was that the best way to spend that money is to replace as many of the corner blocks of intersection concrete with handicap ramps with a little indicator bumps on and all that. So the $7,000 that we're authorizing is for the engineering for the replacement of all those, so we can start to work on it. Any other?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second that motion. Are some of these have storm drains on it? Is that the, is that the inspiration? The storm drains are, that must be handicap accessibility as far as the project. No, because some have the, on a corner, some have drains on it. That would be different. Okay. Yep. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item number 14 is the approval of volunteer firefighters Josh Adams and Josh Slish.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second that motion. Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item 15 are my comments to the board. So first, I want to congratulate Tom Gifford, Joe Rizzo, and Heather Gray on your election to the board here. I think that, you know, you guys will continue, neither of you live next door to me, so I'm sure that, you know, you'll do a nice job continuing what this board has going. I think we've got a real dynamic board here, so congratulations to you. I also want to say goodbye to Kevin Mathis. Kevin was not successful in his campaign, but I will tell you that I considered Kevin one of the best trustees I've worked with. We started out with a very different relationship than what we have right now, but I have to tell you, the five people sitting at this DAS are one of the most proactive and hardworking boards that I've been a part of. And the fact that we've got two Republicans, two Democrats, and an Independent, and we're doing things like moving toward a new building, doing LED lights in the village here, doing EV charging stations, I mean, there's been a lot of good done for our village by the five people up at this DAS, so I'm very, very proud to work with them. Kevin, I've been proud to work with you. So thank you for your service. And then on a happy hop, Dairy Circus this weekend celebrates one year of their reopening, so if you get, if you get a chance, go in and say hi to Robin Toreen. This board has been waiting for the EV charging, electric vehicle charging stations to be put into our village's parking lot. We're going to be putting in two stations, one slow charge and one fast charge. We'll be the only municipality in this area that has a fast charge electric vehicle charging station. We had planned to have it done this month, but there's a lot of bureaucracy with the state as far as information and different forms over and over again. So we're still working through that, stumbling a little bit. The project is still go, we still have the money, it's just a little slower than we thought. We're currently doing interviews in both police and fire for to fill vacancies that we have in those two departments, and we should have a meeting very soon for those positions. I did have a question on the new CBS. If you go into the new CBS, the EPR, the new CBS is not concrete, it's blacktop. That was required by DOT because there's a sensor there for the length, it's right at that intersection, but Trusty Tiberio brought the fact that there was not a painted crosswalk there, so pedestrians walking across are getting run, not hit, but cars are running up where they should be. So DOT has got to require that they paint that, so it'll be. And not only have they got to require it by painting, but they're requiring it be painted, it can't be the tape that they put down your books, so. I was able to attend a bid meeting this week, and I was happy to see that the two newest businesses in the village, Story Coffee, says that they'll be starting, hoping to open business by the end of the month, and Be Inspired, the home decoration business, which is located, yep, in the middle of all these music stores, they're now open. So we have two new businesses right here arriving. And my last comment is, I remind you that the First Reformed Church of Scotia is celebrating its 200th anniversary this Sunday with a special ceremony at 9 o'clock for anybody who would be interested in attending. And those are my comments. Item 16, correspondence liaison and special committee reports, Trusty Mathis.
I was excited to actually attend the complete street workshop. That was very informative, I learned a lot, and it was very promising. I know there was other board members, I think we all were almost there. It was very promising and exciting to see the things to come.
Trusty Gifford.
So we had a fire department meeting that was uneventful, and there was a planning board meeting last night to approve the cell tower, diminutive cell tower on Leshamton Avenue.
Trusty Tiberio.
I think Tim Goyette did a better job than I could do presenting that, so I have to report from our silly committee.
And Trusty Rizzo.
We had a meeting of the Hollywood Avenue Committee, it's working along very good. There's a lot, a lot of good things are going to be added to it this year, so it should be very successful, so we're hoping the weather stays weather, so you have a good turnout.
Item number 17 is departmental reports, any questions or comments on the departmental reports? Anybody care to accept them? I'll make the motion, accept the reports.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item 18 is yard of the claims.
I'd like to make a motion, pay the bills.
For my last friend, I'll second that.
Thank you.
And for this, we'll call a roll.
Trusty Mathis.
Yes.
Trusty Gifford.
Yes.
Trusty Rizzo.
Yes.
Yes. Item 19 is the approval of the minutes of the special meeting of the Board of Trustees on October 2nd.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item 20 is the approval of the minutes of the October 10th regular meeting of trustees.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item 21 is approval of the minutes of the October 15th special meeting of the Board of Trustees.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item 22 is new business, do any, the rest of us have any new business plans?
A few pieces. First, I would like to thank the mayor for his service to the village. Just like Kevin, we kind of didn't get along when we first started here, but I've learned quite a bit in two years, and I hope to continue learning from you in the future, and hope to see you involve the community now that you're just a citizen, no longer mayor here.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'd like to say something too, because I'm sorry to see you retired.
I've worked with you since you and I have been on this board together. We worked very well, we gave a lot accomplished, but I think in the last couple of years we've accomplished a lot more, like you said, with this board than any other board I've been on. And I've been on quite a few and we really appreciate that you did a heck of a job.
Yeah, I do. Sorry to see you retired too and I should do a better job than I, I would, but, but I'm, I'm pleased to see how excited you are about leaving.
I also too would like to congratulate Heather, Tom, and Joe on your win. And Tom, Joe, and Tom and the mayor, it's been an honor to sit on this board, it's been exciting and a lot of memories that last a lifetime and we've accomplished a lot, especially in the last year. So I'm excited to see all the things that are coming and thank you for all that's out on that committee. Great presentation and I'm happy that I was a part of that, to see that start and I can't wait to see it come to fruition. Thank you.
I have a second piece of new business. I'd also like to thank Kevin Mathis for his service to the board and to the new mayor. I would like to give my glowing endorsement for a possible appointee here who's done a great job over the last four years, bringing lots of grants, lots of help, working bipartisan in the village. And I'd like to give my recommendation to Kevin Mathis for trustee. I don't know if I'm going to be able to lead the village, you guys know that. I don't know, right?
Anybody else with new businesses?
Mr. Mayor, may I address the board?
You don't need to state your name for the record.
Thank you. Mayor, on behalf of the members of the police department, we'd like to thank you for your support over the years. Your confidence in us has been greatly appreciated. Personally, it's been a pleasure to work for you. I'm grateful for the opportunity you gave me here seven years ago and for having faith in me to lead this department. It has been tremendous, tremendously rewarding, due in large part to the positive working environment you have created here. I hope you have a very happy retirement. You should be proud of everything you've done for the department and the village and we thank you for your dedicated service. Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Can I say something? Chris? Chris. We should set the next.
Before I say what I wrote, I would like to say that facilities committee presentation was, was really good. You know, as a, as an architect by trade, I'm excited about where it's going. I've worked on this idea for a while and to see this type of commitment to it is, is really exciting. Chris, over the last twenty-plus years, I've known you in many capacities. First as Mr. Casper, my technology teacher at Scotia High School, then as Mayor Casper, the mayor of the village where I bought my house, and the one who appointed me to the zoning board and then the planning board. Then as politician, Chris, the one who reluctantly comes out every couple of years during election season, the one who recruited me to run for trustee and who I proudly served on the board with for a little over two years, including three months when for some reason you entrusted me as deputy mayor. Since then, starting almost eight years ago, when you chose me as your superintendent of public works, I've known you as Chris. Obviously my boss, but also mentor, a sounding board, a confidant, and a friend. Chris, I'm proud to be a part of the management team that you created, a team that not only works well together, but enjoys working together. You gave us the freedom and the support to succeed and the village directly benefits from that. We knew that by selecting and encouraging the right people and then letting them run their departments as they saw fit, the best results would be achieved for not only the employees, but more importantly, all the residents of the village. But your support doesn't just stop at department heads. You're invested in the careers and well-being of all village employees, which is what makes working for the village more than just a career, but truly being part of a family. Chris, your impact on this village is immeasurable and I and many others will greatly miss you as our mayor. Thank you for your support of the Department of Public Works and thank you for your dedicated service to the village. And lastly, I promise that someday, very soon, I'll fix your street.
I've had the honor of serving the village of Scotia in the fire department for twenty-nine years. I first met Mayor Casper in two thousand and two, when he served as village trustee. At that time, I was on the unit executive board. During this period of time, the village was going through some tumultuous times and I remember countless hours spent meeting with trustee Casper over various areas of concern. Some were formal meetings and others were informal meetings at a kitchen table. Trustee Casper had a gift for listening, would not show his cards right away. Seemed like he always had a plan of attack and although he considered other options, he normally didn't like deviating from the plan. That was especially evident when we were in contract negotiations. Lord knows, I tried creative ways to get a lot of extra and that would get him frustrated and I would get shut down, but it was always amusing watching his face get red. I'll tell you this though, we always left the table with a fair deal and a handshake. After trustee Casper was elected mayor, for the next twelve years, the village went through a healthy transformation. It didn't happen overnight, but it was built through understanding, education, and cooperation. Any programs were started or enhanced and many fences were mended. A spirit of unity between village departments and being a family was nurtured and encouraged. And over the ensuing years, a cohesive village board was formed under the mayor's leadership. This all combined with encouraging the growth of businesses and community interaction with the village and its employees. No matter what the topic or event, the common theme of what is best for the residents of Scotia was always evident and adhered to. There are many people who have contributed to all the wonderful things the village has to offer, but this cannot be accomplished without a strong leader. We have faced a lot of challenges over the years and have remained Scotia strong and will continue to do so in the future. Mayor Casper, I want to personally thank you for the support and vision that you've had for the Scotia Fire Department. The direction that you and the village board have paved for us has allowed us to maintain and provide an exemplary service to the village and its residents while providing for the safety, the security of the men and women of the Scotia Fire Department. I appreciate the faith you have shown in me as a leader and the guidance, mentoring, and friendship you have shown me throughout my career. I know I speak for all the members of my department by saying thank you and we wish you and your family the very best in the years to come. Thank you. So last call, any new business for any?
We should set up a meeting for...
You have your organizational meeting's already set.
Okay.
Six o'clock, first Monday.
Okay, so should we do our work session then too?
Well, you'll be mayor then, so then you can do your...
Well, you're saying we should set it now. We might as well do that instead of do, to meet the Tuesday also, so let's do that.
Six o'clock.
Yeah.
I think it's Monday, the third.
Monday.
I know it's Monday the third.
Yeah.
On Monday the third, I'm going to wake up and my first day is a non-politician. I'm going to call Andrew Callout and ask him when he's going to fix the spring. All right, now my closing statement, I just, I want to say thank you to this board. Sixteen years in public office is a long time and I've seen all kinds of iterations. I've been happy in the village that, that there have been very, very few times where things have boiled down to partisan politics. Generally, when we get together, we do the best for the village and especially this board right now, I think that we're there in pieces. I mean, it's been a pleasure working with you guys. And, you know, sometimes I'm a sappy kind of guy because I try to learn something from different people and different experiences I go through life. I think it makes you a stronger person and I've learned some humility with this board, but I've also learned what my wife calls my greatest fault and that is my dismissiveness of people that don't agree with me. So I've learned a little bit of compromise from you guys too and I think it's taken us a long way. So it's made me, I think, a better mayor and it's made this, this board fantastic. So I want to thank all of you guys for what you've done for me and what you've done for the village. And when I continue on, I want to talk to my department heads a little bit. When I go around the village and it was particularly gratifying during, you know, these last couple of months when people know I've been leaving to hear the positive things that people say about this village. What they don't realize is I only work here three hours a day. And it's the department heads and people like Lydia that really run this village and keep it going. And so I want to thank you guys for making me look good, but I also want to thank you for the way that you embrace our village. I think that the leadership that's shown by the department heads trickles down to the employees and the ownership of what we have here in Scotia and what we are as a, as a